Please remain standing for a moment of silence for Thomas Nelson, Jr., brother to Deborah Casasano in I-8 Clinton High School, and for the three students and three staff that were killed today at the Covenant School during the shooting in Nashville. All right, we're going to open today's school committee meeting for Monday, March 27th, 2023. Can I have a motion to approve the bills?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the amended minutes from our last meeting, March 6th to 2023?
So it's just that sheet you guys have an insert with the one yellow line, that's just an amendment to the original minutes that were in your packet. Just basically corrected it, it had said CHS Guidance Council Position, it was a CES Guidance Council Position, so.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept amended minutes, minutes as amended.
Second. Any other discussion? Any not all in favor? All right, turn it over to Dr. Meyer for the celebrations.
All right, so we have another packed house. I can never estimate how many people are coming to these things. I'm always like, don't need the auditorium. And here we are. So I guess to get us started, we'll have Principal Silvio come up and start with the elementary school.
All right, I have a lot of them tonight. So we're starting, March can be a long month. We've reached that sort of point of the year where, you know, we're halfway through, there's a lot of pressure on everyone to make sure we get everything in for the year. And so this year, this month, the staff that we picked were a little bit of quiet leadership, knowing that everyone has a full plate. But the staff that we're recognizing tonight have taken on additional roles and responsibilities and have done so quietly, they would never do this for recognition. In fact, I think they chased me through the hall, some of them, because they didn't want to be recognized. But as an administrative team, we know that sometimes we can bite off a little bit more than we can chew and have people on our team that see that and just keep in and do what needs to be done so our kids don't have to go without or we don't have to, you know, not give it our best. We appreciate that. So the first group that I'm recognizing is actually a group because they would never be recognized individually. So we have Mrs. Falconer, Mrs. Sablehorse, and Mr. Brusso. I'm going to first recognize Mrs. Falconer. Maisy has been instrumental in our book fairs, but especially this spring. Our book fairs fund our birthday books so we can make sure that every single student in our school gets to go home with a book on their birthday. They also help with our classroom libraries and replenishing books in our school library. This month, I was a little bit over my head with the book fair between like snow days and things got canceled. And Maisy just offered to jump in, she got schedules done, she communicated that out to the staff. And then the Friday before we kicked off the book fair, I ended up being not feeling well. I wasn't in school. So that Sunday before I brought my daughter back to college, I went in to like set it up, brought my whole family, and whenever I walked in, the entire book fair was set up. It was beautiful, better than I could have imagined, and that's because Mrs. Sablehorse and Mr. Brusso had given up their time on a Friday, took their own initiative, their own time with Mrs. Falconer to make sure that that got set up. So they called themselves the Old Birds, and they told me that they don't want to be recognized, they just do things because it needed to be done and they know so. It was totally unexpected. This is just one example of many times things have had to get done and they just do it. So I want to say thank you, our book fair was a huge success. And I continue to try. So thank you very much.
Carry your books.
Thank you.
The next, the next staff member that we're going to recognize is Kelly Pete.
We had an opportunity with the Neshova Watershed Agency to collaborate on a grant. Again, at the time, there were a lot of competing factors and deadlines that I was dealing with at the time. And Kelly kind of swooped in and gracefully just sort of said she would take on the responsibility of collaborating on the grant. When the grant was secured, she was the point person, she did all the communication between the agency and our administrative team, she set it up with the fourth graders, and they had a wonderful experience there where they got to do land and water demo and animal adaptation demo. And that was just an additional thing Kelly added to her plate this month so that our kids had that on top of expecting a baby and having one at home. So I just wanted to say thank you, it's one example of the many ways you've put it in your area. Okay, and now we have our student who we are so proud of and so happy he's here tonight. So our Student of the Month is Callan Zhao. And so he is a, not only a student leader in our school, but he is also a mathematician. He is the first ever student in Clinton Elementary School to complete his year-long journey in ST Math and all of the additional math challenges that go along with it for the year already now in the school year. ST Math is a program that builds conceptual learning in math by solving puzzles, there's no language at all. And Callan last year got stuck on one of the math challenges and couldn't pass it, so this year he said, I am determined to do it and I'm going to do it, and he has done it. So he demonstrates determination and grit, we're really proud of him and very excited to honor him as our school-wide Student of the Month, and like we said, he's just a very strong leader in our fourth grade.
It's harder than Mr. Seed moving on to the middle school.
We're pleased to honor five students and one staff member this month. Jamison Lorre, our fifth grade. Everything that we read here is put forth by the teachers, so it's very nice, very complimentary. Jamison completes all classwork and homework, he'll seek help when needed, he's always the first student in the classroom, so he's eager to start every day. Jamison is kind and trustworthy, respectful of his class, teachers, and peers. He completes all of his work, takes his time wisely, and takes care of his materials as well as all the materials in the classroom. Jamison is an ideal student, he is kind, respectful, and works very hard to learn what content he is presenting. Congratulations, Jamison. And Mrs. Cowett, who is here as a teacher. Isabella is a role model student, her kindness and compassion shines. She does things difficult even being asked, oh sorry, without being asked. Isabella is respectful to all, she participates and completes assignments with 100% effort. I am so happy to be your teacher, Mrs. Cowett. So happy to be your teacher. Nothing's impossible with you, everything's possible. Congratulations. Taylor is a caring and responsible student. She is diligent about making sure that all of her classwork is finished, she goes out of her way to check in with her teachers when she's absent, which probably isn't very rarely, right? Very rarely, right? She is cooperative and willing to work with any of her peers, her positive attitude is appreciated by all. Congratulations, Taylor. Come on, Malvin. Malvin is a diligent, hardworking student with a positive and pleasant disposition. He participates regularly in class discussions and advocates on behalf of his fellow classmates. Malvin is always respectful and thoughtful in his interactions with teachers and peers and exhibits a natural curiosity and willingness to learn. Malvin is able to respond with optimism and confidence, his teachers are very proud of the progress that he has made and the positive influence he brings to the classroom. Congratulations, Malvin. And our eighth grade recipient is Emma Bray. Emma is a hard worker, putting her best effort forth for every task. She supports her friends and classmates, she is polite and respectful, advocating for herself and others. She is also one of our dual-school students, where she currently has a 95% year-to-date average in high school-level honors geometry. Congratulations, Emma. And our final staff recipient is Mrs. Nancy Milligan, our school nurse.
She really likes it that we prepared exceptionally long speeches for her. So Nancy is incredibly supportive of all the students and staff in our building. In the short time that I've known her, we have moved mountains and carts and we've swabbed noses and we have done everything in between. It doesn't matter what it takes, she will do it. She is always there, always with a smile, often laughing, something that's very needed in schools at all times. And so we are really, really happy to have you and want to honor you.
All right, and Mr. Sirmak for the high school.
Good evening, everyone. We have, from Clinton High School, we have one staff member, two students. The staff member is going to be here tonight, her name is Mrs. Denise Santana, she was nominated by a student. It says here Mrs. Santana should be recognized because, and it's written by a student, because she goes out of her way to make sure that you get your work done and because she has unlimited snacks. She should be recognized. Positive thing. Not only is Mrs. Santana a great teacher, she is also a great person, was one to give you personal advice about growing our personal pocket. So, Mrs. Santana, thank you. Next, we have two students, and these two students worked on a project in a computer science class. The students' names are Nicholas Boulay and Ellie Esposito. Nicholas is here on this tonight. So this is written by a staff member. Ellie and Nicholas were nominated to be recognized for submission of a project that began in their computer class at Clinton High School. Nick and Ellie embarked on a journey together to create a submission for MassSTEM Pub Industry Connects created by Governor Baker. Their mission was to create a zombie apocalypse program that included code, pseudocode, float chart, screenshots, proven testing, creativity, broken-up program, and questions to the industry professionals that created them. They came in first place in computer science for all high schools and grade levels participating in Massachusetts. They elaborated on user experience with an exceptional storyline to support the required elements. In recognition for their achievement, Nick and Ellie, Ellie, sorry, were awarded the opportunity to participate in a paid 100-hour industry internship this spring and summer worth $1,500. Ellie is creative, talented, tenacious student who gives 100% to everything she does in her computer class. Nick is thorough and gifted, has one last, is most likely to help anyone in the year. I could not think of two more deserving students for a paid internship than Ellie and Nick.
All right, before we go on to the regular part of the meeting, you're welcome to stay, but you're obviously not going to. So have a nice night.
We understand if you don't want to stick around and take pictures outside, but thank you. That's how I've been feeling, I'm setting up all the extra chairs, it's like, we only need them for 15 minutes.
Do we have students? Oh, you said you didn't think. Yeah, I know, I gotta get someone highlighting for me too. Okay, anybody here for public comment? No? Student rep, Mr. Sirmak, nobody, right?
Student rep?
Student rep?
We have a student rep tonight.
You said no.
Okay, thank you.
Robert, it's all yours.
Up there fast. So, all the recognitions were absolutely great, this great stuff happening, and as Principal Silvio alluded to, this is the time of year that's the really tough time. The kids are getting tired of being in school, we're all tired of winter and cold and snow. There's the ever-loming MCAS hanging over our head, you know, and getting the kids prepared. But the thing that has really kind of sent the teachers into a tailspin was the latest edict from the Department of Education that recently we went to e-Sbed, and I don't remember exactly when they changed to e-Sbed, but we all had to get trained in e-Sbed. And it's so much more cumbersome and difficult than just trucking down to the file cabinet in the guidance department and reading, you know, the paper copy that I was really good at going through fast and figuring out where it was that I needed. And then apparently the state, in their infinite wisdom, is now going to change to a different platform, of which we got notice this week. Please don't ignore it when it comes, you will need to sign up for this new platform with probably another new password to remember. And then we were reminded this week too, with some changes in special education, that teachers, regular classroom teachers are now going to be responsible for charting what's happening with their special education students besides special education teachers. And they're just feeling like overwhelmed, like one more edict, one more thing, when am I supposed to do this? We haven't gotten any training on it yet or any more information than, hey, you're supposed to be doing this! And, you know, we're always thinking about what we need to teach for content, how we need to differentiate for UDL, how we need to meet every child's social, emotional learning, and then meeting the needs of our English language learners. And then we get more edicts thrown in our head, it's like, when do we have time for us? And several teachers have said to me, have come to me and said, how are we ever going to keep enough teachers in the classroom? Because the load on our shoulders just keeps getting heavier and heavier. And I don't have any solutions, but I do know that Brenda and I set up a meeting for next week to check in with Dr. Meyer. We haven't had one in probably three or four months because things have been going along pretty well and quiet, but it's like, maybe we just need to talk about kind of some new stuff and changes that are coming down the pike. But I also have a good thing to share with you. You, a couple weeks ago, paid for my conference fee to go to the All-State Music Education Teachers Conference. And of course, there were all sorts of vendors there, you know, and I put my name in for whatever, you know, was the prize being offered. And my name was selected to receive $500 worth of free instrument repair from Leonard's Music. So they came and picked up several instruments today.
That's good, awesome.
That was, that was a good thing, but then I'm like, oh my goodness, you know, what instrument should I send out? What do I think is, you know...
With great power comes great responsibility.
Yes, it does. But, you know, things are going well, things are going as evidenced by all the wonderful things that the kids are doing. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody from the PTA? CPAC can hook all the same person, right? Back to you, Dr. Meyer.
All right. So we have a couple staffing updates. Kelly Pete, obviously who was here earlier, she will be going on maternity leave after the April vacation. I believe Miss Silvio's come up with a plan, we had another teacher who just recently returned from maternity leave, so we were able to kind of swap long-term subs right over. We had two resignations, Marcia Chapdelaine, the TLC co-teacher at Clinton Elementary School, her last day will be March 31st, and Jean DeRosa, math teacher at CHS, her last day will be April 7th. So, and I think for both of those, I know at the high school, it's a similar situation where I think they have, they have a long-term sub whose assignment is leaving that's pretty much ready to roll right into that if needed. And I believe that they did, came up with a similar sort of coverage plan in the TLC room, but it's also, that's a very supported classroom, so hopefully that'll be a smooth transition. All right, so today we had technology and facilities on our sort of agenda. So to start, I'd invite Chris DeHanna, our Director of Technology, to give you a little overview of kind of what, where we are this year so far and sort of what we're looking to do for next year.
Good evening. Hello, Chris. How's everything going? Good. So I think we last spoke, it was the beginning of December, and this new school website hadn't yet launched yet, and we were promising right around the new year. So it did launch right before January 1st, I think it was December 28th to December 29th. So the initial feedback's been relatively positive. We've got a ton of feedback those first few weeks because we had some broken links and we had some things, people didn't know where they were, and, you know, it was a whole new look and feel, so, but we were able to kind of work through those things. I do encourage people, parents, staff, even students, people in the community, questions or looking for, you know, things to be changed or features added or updates made, to please continue to reach out to us, either to me or to Chrissy LaPerle. Our access, our numbers and emails are right on the school website so we can continue to enrich that website and make sure that everyone who needs access to it, which are, again, the public, the staff, the students, the teachers, you know, we want to make, you know, make it conducive for them, so. We also spoke, I think it was December 5th, about the Emergency Connectivity Grants, so we did receive that $200,000 grant, which turned into 500 student Chromebooks, so we received those, I think it was the first or second week of January. So, a little scared, I had received an email sometime mid-February, everything was approved and we'd received the Chromebooks and then they were looking to dot some i's and cross some t's, and I think we got our official letter like, what, two, three weeks ago? So, but anyway, so everything worked out. Again, they wouldn't have given us the money or the Chromebooks if, but just how the government works, some of that acceptance and, you know, rewards letter came after the fact, so. So they're in a secure location right now, and the plan is to use them for the upcoming '23, '24 school year, so those Chromebooks will kind of just build right into our refresh cycle, grade five, grade nine, and then the hope is, because we received a little bit more this year than we typically would purchase, that we'll be able to give a lot newer devices down at the elementary school for those students, so they're not kind of getting the leftovers, the two-year, three-year-old Chromebooks shifting down. So it was a big grant, really thankful to get it, it gives us some flexibility this year with our budget and, you know, again, glad we got it. Kudos to you guys for getting it. Yeah, no, it was awesome. So, ongoing projects, so security, so we're always looking to add cameras. We recently did an inspection of all three schools. You know, the elementary school, we're still having some issues there with the PA system, the middle school, the PA system I think is 35, 40 years old. We had a couple of areas in this building where there weren't speakers or they weren't hooked up, so after the lockdown, you know, it's kind of a learning experience and to see where those locations were, so we've made those necessary changes over the last few weeks. And again, it's something we're going to continue to look into for next year's budget for security as well, just to make sure that every location and every building has a viable speaker in which they can hear announcements, general announcements and obviously for emergency announcements as well. The other thing, we resigned with our ISP provider for another three years, so they manage the internet access at our three schools, the central office and then the fieldhouse across the street over here, so part of that three-year deal, our price did an increase, but they offered us a free upgrade for that fieldhouse, which will be nice because we know there's, obviously there's a lot of people there during football games, track and field, baseball, things of that nature, but we should get a more consistent feed for our game days. So, again, just, you know, allowing more people to be on, multiple feeds going at the same time and not have any service disruption, so that was a nice perk to sign on to that three-year deal. Budget FY24 updates, so I spoke about the Chromebooks, so those will go to grades five and grade nine. Speaking with Mrs. Silvio and Dr. Meyer, we're looking, we went iPads for grade one two years ago, and it's been very, very positive. The students love it, the teachers love it, they think that it's a lot easier for the students to use an iPad at five, six years old.
For kindergarten.
For, that's kindergarten?
Yeah.
What did I say?
Grade one.
My fault. So we're looking to make that change also for grade one for next year, because just the studies show and some of the feedback I've received from other school districts, that they like Chromebooks for grades two and on, but for the five, six, seven-year-olds at K and one, they find that the best results they get and, you know, the ease of access would be iPads. So we've certainly perfected rolling out the iPads for grade K and hope to do that for grade one as well. So a lot of the pushback with Apple over the last few years, or at least over the last 10 years, was the management, but I think they've kind of learned from the Google aspect of it, and it's a lot, they're a lot easier to manage now moving forward. And then item three is the staff refresh schedule, so we have a spreadsheet, I could have shared it with you, but, you know, we try to replace staff devices every three to four years, the student devices every three to four years, so we have a... to four years, the student devices every three to four years. So we have a set amount we purchase every year, and we have a running list of who gets what and when they get it and kind of like, oh, you're due for a new device. And sometimes they say, no, I like my device. I don't need one. So we'll kind of, you know, tuck it away or we'll list you to another staff member. But sometimes it'll come back to me like a month later. So you know what? I will take that device and we'll scramble from there. But, you know, I think our refresh schedules are, have been on point and, you know, has been able to kind of keep a consistent budget, you know, year over year, you know, for the stuff that we're going to need. Project Lead the Way upgrades. So we've discussed a computer lab at CHS. So Kathy Curry, who's the teacher of that program at the high school, her classroom's right across the hall from me. So she gets my ear, you know, at least four or five times a week, just saying, hey, you know, I need this, or hey, I need that to do our curriculum. So it's something that we do have in the preliminary budget for next year. And to kind of help with that, Kathy and I filled out a grant, and that money was received on February 1st this, this last month, to try to help offset some of that cost that might go towards that lab. Another big area we're looking at is visual displays. So whether it's projectors or televisions, we had a touch view panel dropped off at the elementary school a few weeks ago as a demo. And so that's kind of been making its way around the elementary school. So the demo, the demo we have is about 65 inches. It's on, it's on a cart. The great thing I love about it is that it's dual-touch. So you can actually have like two or three students actually like touching the screen at once and, you know, can, you can kind of divide the screen into three if you want. So it's not single-touch where only one student or one staff member could actually use it at a time. And because of the size and the width of it, you know, you're able to do, you know, you could have three kids doing a math equation, for example, with their finger. You know, you don't need a pen. You can actually use your finger, your index finger or something. And you could also annotate and you can also do a whole bunch of other things and mirror and Chromecast. Teachers can take their device and wirelessly project it onto the, onto the visual panel. So, so we'll have that for another month or two. And again, you know, all the decisions I think are collaborative, especially between myself and Dr. Meyer and the building principals. But we want what the teachers want, right? Like, if they, if I disagree with it, but they love it, I mean, they're the ones teaching their students, right? They're the ones that are going to know better than I will probably how to implement that and what works for them. It might specifically what, what works for that grade level. So again, we're trying to give them a couple of different options. You know, like the high school here, we're pretty much standard projector, right? That's what they want. But the elementary school, again, we're talking about more interaction and more use with students. It might be a better option. And then again, document cameras. Staff love document cameras. I had somebody come to my office today looking for a document camera. It's semi-worked, but she's like, I'll take it. And I said, all right. So again, not too expensive, a couple hundred dollars apiece. But again, something that I think is vital for each classroom. The last part, security. So again, just a huge need for both cyber and physical security. So some of the things we're looking to do next year is to do remote access to the camera feeds. So you don't have to be in the building to actually ask, access the camera. So if Dr. Meyer was at home and his, the alarm in the school went off, he could actually access the feed or Mr. Sirmak or Ms. Harder or Ms. Silvio. Same thing with remote access to the alarms. So just, again, just more alerts, more knowledge of what's going on in the buildings, whether it's during school hours, after-school hours, on the weekends, over the summer, just to try to keep the information flowing of what's going on in the buildings at all times. Questions?
That's a very thorough report.
Sorry, I just.
No, no, we like thorough.
Keep it short, sweet, and move on. So again, you guys have my information. If there's any questions or anything I can do for you, just please don't hesitate to reach out. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thanks.
All right. And then, so our next one is facilities. So our Director of Facilities, Brian Fergas, here. Let's do a similar update of kind of the status of some of the projects from last year and some of the things he's looking at for next year's budget.
Thank you. Good evening.
Yeah, like Steve said, we'll, I'll kind of give a progress report of some of the last year's warrant articles that dealt directly with the school and kind of a look forward of what I'm looking to put into our fiscal 2024 budget this, this July. Couple items have been completed. A lot of them are still pending and we're working through kind of the process of going out to bid and writing up the specs for some of these larger projects. First one, this is actually a fiscal year '21 article, so it's been on the books for a while, but we did the athletic complex roof last October. So that's, that's completed. They did a great job. They were in and out, I want to say in two weeks, and looks, looks much better over there. Couple of the pending warrant articles from last year, or this current year, they see them as put the middle school mobile generator. I'm working with the town administrator right now to look at the approved vendor list. We don't think this has to go out to bid. There is, at last I looked, is an eight to 12-week lead time for the equipment itself. So we're trying to move as quickly as we can to get this purchased. And that would replace the rental that's currently at the middle school right now. So that's still a work in progress. The high school auditorium, I had a couple meetings with a, a vendor that specializes in the lighting and sound systems. We got a, so this $140,000 was the original quote for material and installation. I did have Chris DeCecus, who is more knowledgeable of that equipment, take a look at that original quote. And he said that we could probably tone down some of the equipment to make it more user-friendly for students and staff. I had a rep come in again, and he was involved in that meeting. Chris was also involved in that meeting. And they kind of, I think, misunderstood what we were looking for and gave us kind of an overall, that we revamped everything.
An entire overall.
A whole new system where that, when that price and that proposal came in.
It was a little more, a little more than we had thought of.
Was more than we budgeted for. So I do have another company, which I reached out to on Friday. We're trying to set up a time either next week, or, I'm sorry, it'll be early next week, where I can explain kind of what we're looking for. And again, we're looking to get the lightings upgraded, updated, and just working where we're not worried about it, you know, like lights not coming on or the sound not working properly for plays and things like that.
Stop the humming from the box.
It's stopping that from the back of the stage. So that's the goal. I'm hoping we have better results with this, this current, or this next company that's coming through. The chiller replacement. So I did reach out to an engineering firm to, it's kind of been a big push on the town side as well, is when we do larger projects and that are more technical, to have an outside engineer or consultant kind of oversee that, that process. I mean, it's a lot of money we're dealing with here to make sure that, you know, one, the specs are written. So when it goes out to bid, we're not missing anything on our end. And two, when it's installed, it's tested and, and we have experts there on site, ready to troubleshoot if needed. So I do have a company that is going to price out, actually taking care of the bid process, the actual drawing of the specs, putting it out to bid, overseeing the install once, once the town accepts a proposal as they come in. So once I have that, we'll have more of an accurate timeline as to the install. There is a big lead time for that equipment as well. So the sooner we can get kind of that red tape, by the way, we'll have kind of a better idea when, when we can switch it, switch it out. Looking this year, fiscal year '24 warrant articles, we're looking to get a new Toro groundmaster mower for the school complex. I think if my numbers are right, it's about 75 acres that they maintain on a daily, weekly basis. The current mower that does a bulk of that is probably close to 15 years old. And we are dumping money into it, and we don't know how much more lifespan that has. So we want to be a little bit more proactive with this and make sure we can maintain the fields to the quality that everyone's used to. So we'll be putting in for that. Next is a facility storage shed or garage, more, so a garage. We're looking kind of the back of the athletic complex parking lot where the storage units are now that, I don't know where they were put there, but there's, we're not getting.
They're not doing much anymore, yeah.
They're not that secure.
Replace the containers.
Right. So I think as far as curb appeal, it will look, it will look much better than the containers. And also it serves a purpose to clean up kind of around the athletic complex, especially for, you know, any athletic events. If there's, if there's instruments around, parents around the athletic complex, we don't want to have our equipment out there. And if we're going to spend $160,000 on a mower, we want to make sure it's under, you know, protected. So, so we did measure and did some rough measurements back in that area. And I did get an estimate based on kind of a 30 by 60 structure, which is, would be 1,800 square feet. The other idea is to host the track mats that currently are at the old fire station. We don't know how much longer we'll be able to store them down there. So we're, we're trying to, you know, solve two problems here with our equipment and then some of, some of the track equipment.
30 by 60, big enough, bud?
Um, I'm going to look at that a little bit closely. But we did, I did get a pricing for the square footage. So it's not set in stone yet, but we could go a little bit, the length could go a little bit longer. But again, that's, that was.
It's a good investment.
The third one, last one, would be milling and raising, necessary drainage, paving the elementary school and high school parking lots. So this isn't a complete repaving of the entire parking lots. It's more focused on, like, for example, the high school, the middle sections all around the building. The DPW does their best, the patch goes up, but, you know, the first snowstorm comes, the plow works it up. So we're looking for a more permanent fix that could get us another 10 or 15 years for not $300, $400, $500,000 to do a complete resurfacing of the areas. And the last one I have is I did request $400,000 to be allocated through the ARPR funds. And that would be solely just strictly, solely to focus on HVAC repairs and upgrades for town buildings and also all three schools and admin building as needed. Right now, we're operating, a lot of the repairs and upgrades come out of our operating budget. So this was a chance to maybe focus on some leisure ticket items that we might not normally get to, because we have to have, you know, leave some funding for, for other repairs and services. So that's what's presented to the select board. We're just waiting to see what, how that money's going to be allocated. So.
Brian, do those ARPR funds have to follow the same cycle as June for warrant articles where we already have that money? Or is that something you could hear on sooner than later?
No, it's not following this town meeting.
So it could be at any time.
It could be anytime, yeah.
That's good. I know I've had that money for quite some time, so it's, it's good to see that we're.
Yeah, my understanding is it has nothing to do with the timeline as far as when budgets are submitted and when, what warrants are due. Any questions or concerns or?
Are you guys okay with those warrant articles that he presented? I mean, I know at some point we'll, we'll find them and probably have them in real wording so that you guys could take a formal vote to endorse them before the, the town meeting. But we would want to be able to, particularly for these articles, because they directly sort of impact the schools, we'd want to make sure that we had school, school committee support for them. So if you have any questions on it, let us know.
Tony, I guess to Matt's point, you mentioned the track stuff, and I don't know, but is just make sure that this is big enough to store all the, you know, like, if you've got three bays, would one bay be enough for, would be enough room in that bay for all the track equipment? Because I don't think there's any place it goes now, right?
Right.
Not only the mats, but all the other.
And even some of the stuff gets tucked under those bleachers or whatever. So it's like if we did, yeah.
Put a big bay back there, let's get everything to go up.
I can look at the measurements again and see. When I first measured it, I think we had, we could go 90 feet across, look at the face. But now we're talking extra, maybe, you know, 80,000.
The other thing I remember is it'll probably be a fairly tall structure so that they can get their stuff in. So we might even be able to work some, you know, shelving or something on in there, especially for track. We might even be able to get it up off the ground so it's less prone to, you know.
I think it's like anything else, right? It's a great idea and something that I think we would fully support. But let's not go to the minimum and then go, oh, this was an awesome idea, but we fell short by 10,000 square feet that we needed, right? Like, it's a great idea. If we're going to do it, let's make sure it gets, gets you everything you need. So we're not going back saying we wish we would have, you know, like anything else.
Yeah, I think it's a discussion we can have. Because we don't, we also don't want it to turn into the old fire station where that's the only storage place.
That's right.
And this idea that we weren't anticipating. So I think if we have an idea of what's going to go in there, then we can measure things, you know.
Absolutely. And I'll talk a little bit more about some ideas when we get to the old Parks and Rec meeting. So.
Yeah, I don't know. Do you want me to bring that up now?
Well, I could, so, so one of the other agenda items is Parks and Rec meeting. So I met with the Parks and Rec. And one of the things we discussed was possibly shifting our before and after-school daycare programs that we run out of the elementary school to kind of make them Parks and Rec programs. They already do the summer, they do the vacations. It's a lot of the same population. And then, so we're looking at where, you know, could we do it? So our morning program's pretty small. So they could definitely do the morning program out of the Parks and Rec building if they wanted to. And then we could just bus them over when it's time. And then the, but right now, they, if they, even if they were to take it over, they'd sort of take it over, but run it at the elementary school for the afternoon because the program's too big based on their space. But I know one of the things that they mentioned is that they were hoping, because that Parks and Rec building has like the garage there that the facilities department uses. And one of their wishlist items would be to kick out the facilities department and turn that into a recreational space. So that was truly like a rec building, right?
And it would more than double the size of their footprint, too.
Right. And they, and they said with the height of the ceilings in there, they think they could even put probably like a half-court basketball, that kind of stuff in there, making so it's more like a gym area in there. So they can do both. So if that were the case, there's employees who are currently sort of housed out of there and trying, equipment in there that would be displaced, that we would then have to say, okay, in order for that to work, if we're going to build a garage for facilities, is it big enough to accommodate that equipment? And then have those employees that are kind of home-based out of there be home-based out of the Veterans Athletic Complex Center there. So I don't know if I accurately, get it guy accurate.
Yeah, no, you did. I looked at it, like briefly, I went down to and measured the square footage, and it's, it's approximately 2,500 square feet, which would be, that's kind of our biggest square space down there. But not kind of, it is. To put a structure that big.
That big.
That big up here might not be feasible.
Yeah.
So it's a, it's an issue I think we need to deal with. I don't know if that would.
If that's the answer, right.
Or the location for something as big as that.
But those are just sort of the ideas that we're kind of kicking around, you know, they're all that sort of the wishlist stuff, this was kind of, all these pieces fall together. You want to make sure that, to your point about not building something like too small, we don't want to miss if it's like, hey, this could solve two other issues. Because if the, if the Parks and Rec building is not big enough to, to house the after-school care program, that opens up like gym space in the elementary school right after school that we're currently, you know, so it's like, it's everything has that sort of trickle-down effect. So.
Well, it's a net benefit to the town to consider a larger structure somewhere else if it can solve a value out of three different elements, right? So, I mean, probably worth the, worth the look and then you kind of land where you land.
Yeah. Looking at all our options as well.
And all the other projects are great, Brian. I mean, I caught the, when I was dropping off, the, the fields are done today. So, you know, the, the baseball field being complete, the softball field being complete, looks awesome. So just.
Yeah, it's ready.
Continued awesome work on your department's part for when you've taken over. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
All right. So kind of continuing with the facilities theme. The next thing is the middle school MSBA update. So all of you were at the presentation at the Selectman meeting on the 15th. We had a building committee meeting that following Tuesday. At that time, they voted to move three designs forward. Those three designs are in your packet. It's the add renovation one, AR1, which is probably the one that had, that most closely follows the existing footprint of the building. AR2, which was the one that added sort of the wings to the existing building, and new construction one. And it should be noted that new construction one, two, and three were very similar. So even though we went with new construction one, as they actually refine the design now, there might be some elements of two or three that get sort of introduced as they sort of look at the specifics, you know, dig down to the next level of, of specifics. So this, those are the three designs that are being submitted for our preliminary design program, the PDP, which is the first submittal we need to make to the MSBA. That was submitted. I got the, I got CC'd on the email earlier today that was submitted to the MSBA today. And that keeps us on track. We're hoping to, by the end of June, or by June of this year, to get from these three designs down to one preferred schematic design. And then we would develop that one preferred schematic design and hopefully go, the vote for funding would be not this June, but the following June. And if we got that vote, then everything would just move forward with construction. So by the, once they, this, when we went from the seven or eight, whatever we had to three, there really wasn't a lot of cost information. When we get from the three and go to the one, there'll be a lot more cost information that they'll be able to put in. So we'll have some of that. I know a lot of people are anxious about that. And then the other thing that really came up in our discussion was each challenge, each, each option comes with its own challenges. Specifically, like add renovation one, while it might be the cheapest. Specifically, like add renovation one, while it might be the cheapest in terms of construction costs, because we're not changing as much of the footprint, it's probably the most expensive in terms of swing space costs, because those kids still need to go to school somewhere, which now means we're setting up modular classrooms, we're doing things like that, disrupting kind of the process for a while. Add ren02, because we're adding sort of new wings, it might be less disruptive, because we could try to add those new wings first and use them as much as we can instead of the modular classrooms, but you would still need probably some swing space here or there, and probably some weird things of like, you know, meals being brought over from this building or something like that, which would probably happen in the other one, too, depending on when they're working on different things. And then the, so new construction, while it might have the highest construction cost, the total project might not be as much, because you're not going to have to put all this stuff into the swing space, because essentially you'd put up a, you know, you put up a fence and they build a building, and then when you're done, you just move over, right? So, so there are some different pros and cons to those, but they're going to map all that out, and that's why you can't just automatically look at it. That's one of the things that they cautioned us, is you can't just look and say, well, this one's definitely going to be the cheapest one. Well, we don't know. That's why we should have a better idea of that by, by June, because sometimes, you know, some of the challenges you face in a renovation that are unexpected can raise that cost significantly, where when you can plan, now when they design buildings, they're going to design everything efficiently from, you know, minimizing the amount of wire and pipe you're using, you know, like they'll design everything so efficiently that you might actually save some things, so. So that's where we are, that's the update. So there's not a whole lot, and there's still some stuff going on in the background that we're working on, so we'll still continue having some, you know, monthly meetings, but then we'll just, right now, it's really the designer working on building out these, these three options for us and trying to sharpen their pencil on those designs. Does anyone have any questions about that? Okay. All right. So June 13th, 2023 is going to be eighth grade recognition night. We had to work around a lot of things to kind of schedule that. We have a school committee meeting scheduled for that same night. So I'm proposing it's easier to move the school committee meeting than it was to move the eighth grade recognition night, because that's why we landed on date, because that's when we needed everything available. It's up to you guys, when, you know, how soon you want to do it. The election will actually take place on, the town election should be the 12th, and then we would, that would be our, whatever meeting that would be, would be our reorg meeting. So the 13th would be eighth grade recognition night. We could meet, you know, the 14th, if you wanted to meet on the 14th, if you wanted to sneak it in before the end of school, you know, we could go into the next week on the, I'd probably suggest the 21st. I know it's a Wednesday, but Monday's a holiday, and then Tuesday's the last day of school.
Could it wait till the following Monday?
The 26th?
Yeah.
Probably. I mean, it's.
I don't know, people's holiday schedule, like, that might be a holiday week.
I would say, don't make the decision around me specifically, but if it is a reorg meeting, I'm actually in Italy from the 15th to the 22nd, so I won't be here that, that seven or eight days. So if it's important that we're all present, the 26th might be helpful, or, I don't know, like, it's up to you.
Ms. Harder, do you know what time grade eight recognition starts?
It's going to be done at six to eight.
Six to eight.
But it's not set in stone, so it needs to shift a little.
I'd say, I mean, the only other option is if we wanted just to keep the agenda light, and if it's really just a reorg meeting, we could try to do a meeting at like five. You know, we ought to be here anyway, so we would just meet here, have a quick meeting, and then go right over to the event.
I'm okay with that, too.
It's up to you guys.
I'm fine with that.
That's fine.
All right. So let's, right now, we're planning on it being five. If we, as we approach that date, if for some reason it looks like there's going to be a significant agenda that's going to require more attention than, than we can give that night, I'll bring that up again.
Okay.
But for now, we'll just keep it as a 13th, but, but go like an hour before the start of the ceremony.
Good enough.
All right.
Thank you.
It's good, they'll all be here and ready to walk over for the ceremony. All right.
You have to wear a suit to that meeting.
Yeah. In your packet is a new draft calendar. Not much has changed since the last version, except we have added in half days, and one of the professional development days was originally scheduled for March 22nd. We ended up moving that up to March 15th, based on some of the timing of when we want to be able to look at stuff and have time to implement it. I don't need you to approve this tonight, because I kind of like to leave these out for comment in case we, you know, if there's any questions from the unions or the public about concerns with the schedule. But I'd say this draft is pretty much, as far as I'm concerned now, this is a complete draft, that I would probably, unless we get any feedback, I would put on the next agenda for approval. I don't know if you guys have any questions or concerns regarding the calendar as it's presented. Okay. I already updated you on the Parks and Rec meeting, that was a good meeting. Like I said, I think it makes, I think we, it makes sense to kind of try to partner with them on that before and after school care, so we'll continue to explore that. Our cheerleaders have qualified for Nationals again, so they're looking to go to pretty much the same national competition they went to last year in Pensacola. There is a little breakdown of some of the fund costs there, and like we did last year, we'll probably pick up certain costs that we would have picked up, like at least their transportation to the airport, registration for the event, and they're doing a lot of the fundraising for the travel stuff. And then the next page should have, you should have this other page with sort of the flight information and chaperones and those types of things. So they'll have, they have three kind of chaperones there. Fortunately, we also know that there's, I think, a couple, a couple, well, at least one, I know, staff member who's going to be traveling down there as a parent, who is also going to serve sort of as our emergency chaperone if there were anything that came up. So I guess at this point, I mean, we'll continue to work with them on their fundraising and everything. They did a great job last year. I know it went, it went off pretty smoothly. I guess at this point, I just want to make sure that we have permission for them to have an out of state trip.
So can I have a motion to approve the cheerleaders' trip to the Nationals?
Still moved.
Second.
Any questions, discussion? All in favor?
All right. And as we've been doing, I think we told her, she knows the drill, to keep a running tally of the expenses and the fundraising, and so we can get a report back on, on what, how that money was spent and when it went. Student council donations, so there's actually two student council donations we're just going to share with you. These do not need your approval, but we were recommended to sort of share it with the school committee from our auditors. Basically, what it is, is when a organization, a student organization raises money, does a fundraiser, puts it into the student activities account, and then they write a check from student activities to make a donation. They want to just make sure that we're being kind of transparent about that, of where that money is going. So I know one of them that I have is the middle school student council. They did a fundraiser, I'm not exactly sure even what the fundraiser was, but they ended up raising $327.60 that they are donating to the American Red Cross earmarked for the earthquake victims in Syria and Turkey. So that, they just made that donation of their fundraiser. And I know Mr. Sarmak, I think there was another fundraiser for the high school. Yeah, go ahead.
So the CHS student council ran an online fundraiser this past fall, selling T-shirts and sweatshirts for the Pink Night athletic events. Pink Night athletic events represents breast cancer awareness. The school council ran this fundraiser for a couple reasons. One reason was to supply the concession stand for our home basketball games. They always need startup money, so they raised that money. And the second was to donate 30% of the profits to the Pink Revolution of New Hampshire. The Pink Revolution of New Hampshire is a nonprofit organization that serves patients undergoing cancer treatments in New Hampshire en masse. This year, the student council raised $802.50, and they're donating $240.75 to the Pink Revolution of New Hampshire.
Thank you. Thanks.
So I just, you know, it's good also to just share that, that there's, you know, these are great causes that our students are choosing to, to, you know, put in the effort to support, so. Just wanted to just share that and be transparent about it. And I think that's all I have.
Perfect. All right. Anything under, from curriculum?
No.
Safety?
We, I don't think we had any meetings between now and the last one.
Me either. Marketing?
The exception of building.
Policy procedures. Facilities, we didn't meet, but rise up.
Good enough.
We're good on negotiations.
Yeah.
For a long time. Yeah. Anything under old business? And then our new business?
Just under new business, you know, it's probably, it's probably a little bit out of my lane specifically, but there's, there's a late add to your packet that's just a readout of the collaboration that the Clinton High School baseball team had with the Booster Club, where they hosted a Music Bingo fundraising event on March 4th. I have it because my wife happens to be one of the moms that helped out with running it, with a lot of the players' parents, were really vital in kind of getting this thing moving. Special thanks to Mr. Bates to my right. He donated his time and was our, was our DJ and host, and the event was, was really well received. I think we had about 160 or so folks show up to Turner's that donated the location for us, and the kids, you know, raised somewhere around like $42, $4300 for the program. So they are in the midst of figuring out what to do with that, but the readout, the receipts, and sort of the small P and L, if you will, is all there in the counter for you guys. The money's been turned over to the Booster Club, as they partnered with them as the folks that'll help them out as we go forth here. Because I think usually it's one of two options, right? They either work with the Booster Club and the money goes there, where their treasurer looks after it, or we do a fundraiser and we turn it over to the, to the school, and then they look after it. So that's where the money did get turned over to. So if there's any questions on that, certainly, we'd be happy to take them.
Okay, under new business, I just wanted to congratulate the two Clinton players who were part of the Shoba hockey team that won the state. I know one is Tierney Ford, is that right? And I apologize, if anyone knows who the other student was, I can't remember his name. You know, I got nothing. And I want to congratulate the Western North Basketball, because our former principal, Mr. Hastings' daughter teaches there. So there's the Clinton link to the, to Western North winning a state title. So we have the Clinton link to the Shoba winning, and also, we're champs everywhere. And on that note.
Could I, I would just add two things.
You always do.
One would just be, you know, obviously, with another incident today happening in Nashville, you know, that it's another reminder, we are working on, on the continued feedback and changes. It's one of, literally one of the things I was doing this morning, probably right around the time that incident was happening, was coding the responses from the staff survey and looking, starting to look at some pricing for different things, different types of lockdown kits and window coverings and that kind of stuff. So probably, I'm going to try to get that stuff all in a better proposal, and we'll probably have a safety committee meeting to look forward for that. And then on a happier note, I did get a chance to go to the musical on Friday, and I think those kids did an amazing job. That was a great show. Even that special guest at the end didn't, didn't ruin it. No.
All right, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Removed.
Second. All in favor?